Starting.
All right, let's call to order the Sparks City Council meeting of May 24th at 2:00 PM. In person, I might add, although we do have some Zoom attendees. Let's start with roll call. Madam Clerk.
Mayor Lawson.
Here.
Council members Abbott.
Here.
Vanderwell.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Bybee.
Here.
Dare.
Here.
City Attorney Adams.
Here.
Acting City Manager Martini.
Here.
We have a quorum. Thank you.
Okay, I've got open and ceremonies, but I'm not sure we're going to do the the flag, the pledge of allegiance first? And let's have Mr. Dare. You're going to do the invocation, right? How about Mr. Martini?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Will you please join me? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and all those of you in the public out there, bear with us. Zoom wasn't challenging enough. Now we have an entirely new system for city council. So we're trying to learn that as we're going along here. And let's go to our invocation. Councilman Dare, thank you.
Sure. Dear Lord, we come to you and we thank you that we get to gather once more together in person. But I pray for all the different hands that have been on deck over this last year or year and a half. So many people made sacrifices for their families, to from our doctors, to our first responders, to so many. Thank you for this new season, and I pray as we walk forward, looking at what it looks like in our businesses and our city, as we make decisions, give us wisdom. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Okay, let's move on to public comment. Madam Clerk, you have a disclaimer to read first.
I do, Mr. Mayor. Good afternoon, and thank you for joining us. Due to the social distancing requirements enacted in response to the COVID-19 pandemic, the Sparks City Council meeting for today will be a hybrid meeting hosted both in person and in the virtual setting. The safety of Sparks residents, employees, and elected officials is important to us, and we appreciate your patience as we journey through this virtual meeting together. The City of Sparks uses Zoom, a third-party app for its virtual meetings, and does not control its technical specifications or requirements. Your ability to participate in public comment through Zoom may be impacted by factors like the type of device you use, the strength of your internet or cellular signal, and the company that provides your internet or cellular service. The City of Sparks is not responsible if you are not able to participate in a meeting through Zoom due to these or any other factors. General public comment will be announced for items four and 12.1. If you are attending in person and wish to speak during general public comment, please, please complete a public comment card and submit it to the city clerk. For those watching or listening from home, you will need to call in using the phone number or join via the meeting link provided on the city council agenda. Public comment will not be permitted on social media outlets. Public comment will also be open for public hearing item 10.1. All participants joining via Zoom will be muted upon entry to the meeting. If you would like to speak during public comment items, press star nine from your telephone or raise your hand on your computer or tablet when prompted. You will be called upon to speak one at a time by the name or the telephone number you are calling from. No video callers will be admitted to the meeting. When you are called on to speak for public comments, state your name for the record and begin speaking. The timer will begin when you say your name, and you will have three minutes. Please remember, any comments or questions cannot be addressed or answered by the council if the topics have not been agendized. Any person who disrupts the meeting to the extent that it is disorderly conduct will be removed from the meeting. Thank you again for joining us. And at this time, if anybody would like to provide public comment virtually, please press star nine on your telephone or use the raise your hand function. And, Mr. Mayor, I do have one emailed in public comment. This public comment is from Eric Blomberg. It says, please, we do not need any more building of homes or apartments. Please stop it. Too many people living here as it is, and it's destroying the natural beauty that we love. Also, for the love of God, stop it with the masks already. It has proven they do not work.
Okay. Any other public comment?
I'm not showing any additional public comment at this time, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, well, let's move on to item 5.1, approval of the agenda. Looking for a motion, and we're going to see if this works now. Dun, dun, dun. All right, I have a motion by Councilman Anderson and a second by Councilman Dare. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify, oops, please vote.
He has to read it, doesn't he?
Mr. Mayor.
Oh, see, this is brand new. Already messed up the first one. Okay, so moved by Councilman Anderson. Go ahead.
I move to approve the agenda as submitted with items 10.1 being heard before items 9.7.
I second that.
Thank you. All right, now further discussion. Seeing none, please cast your votes. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, we got through one. We had a little bit of a stumble. All right, 6.1, approval of the minutes. Looking for a motion, Ms. Vanderwell, moved by Ms. Bybee.
I move to approve the minutes of the Sparks City Council meeting for May 10th, 2021.
Ms. Vanderwell?
Second.
Okay, I got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please vote. I'm going to get past this. Fourteen months of saying that is going to be a hard.
I was used to say right, too.
Okay, motion carries unanimously. All right, we're on to announcements, presentation, recognition items, and items of special interest. 7.1, Sparks High School Principal Kevin Carroll. Mr. Abbott, you have this one.
I think we have Mr. Kevin Carroll in the audience as well, so.
Will you come down and have a seat?
And I'll read this, and we'll let you say a few words, Kevin.
Thank you.
Whereas Sparks High School Principal Kevin Carroll recently won the prestigious Nevada Secondary Principal of the Year Award, given by the National Association of Secondary School Principals, N.A. SSP, and hopes to be named the 2022 N.A. SSP National Principal of the Year in October in Washington, DC. And whereas Principal Carroll grew up in Sparks, Nevada, is a Reed High School graduate, class of 1986, and believes in giving back to his hometown, especially the students of Sparks High School. Whereas Principal Carroll has been the principal of Sparks High School since 2013, where he and his team are credited with turning a low-performance school into a thriving educational environment within three years. Whereas Principal Carroll selected an administrative team that helped him change the climate of the school to facilitate supportive, trustworthy teachers and provide a safe, positive learning environment for the students. And whereas Principal Carroll is a tremendous leader, knows his students, teachers, and staff very well, visits every classroom every day and can always be seen in the halls, takes great interest in what his students do, and is a real champion for Sparks High School. Whereas even during the pandemic, Principal Carroll worked to ensure equality for all students, which is why his team provided technology tools, weekly meals, and hundreds of home visits for Sparks High School students and their families in an effort to stay focused and give students the support they need to get through the school year. Now, therefore, I on behalf of Mayor Ed Lawson, Mayor of the City of Sparks, do hereby join with the city council in commending Principal Kevin Carroll for becoming the 2021 Nevada Secondary Principal of the Year and wishing the best of luck when in Washington, DC this fall.
Wow, thank you, Donald. I don't know what else to say. That was, that was very nice. I think you mentioned it, it really takes a team effort, and I'd like to say I take credit for who I hire, and I hire well. My team is amazing. We've been together for eight years, and we've done some really great stuff at Sparks High School. So very honored to be accepting this in front of the Sparks City Council. I'm a Sparks, Sparks homegrown student and teacher and assistant principal and principal. I went to Mitchell, Dilworth, and then, like Donald said, graduated from that other school on Bering over there. I can't, can't say it too loud. And so anyway, thank you very much for the recognition, and anytime anybody wants to come over and visit, Donald knows obviously the school very well, and I'd love to take you around and show you. So again, thank, thank you very much.
Thank you. I'll tell you what, it doesn't go unnoticed, too.
Thank you.
Your athletic teams and, and everything is just awesome.
Yeah, yeah, we had two, two boys win regional track this weekend, so.
Oh, wonderful.
Super exciting, so, thank you.
Do you hit that button?
Which one is it, Karen?
Hit the three dots.
Oh, okay, got you, okay.
Quest to speak. Okay. All right, do you want to speak now? Forever hold your peace.
I want to know how.
Never mind, never mind us. We're still trying to figure this out. All right, 7.2, National Public Works Week. Paul has that one. Thank you.
All right, whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are vital importance to substantial and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of the City of Sparks. And whereas this infrastructure and these facilities and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals, including engineers, managers, skilled workers, and employees at all levels of government and private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, solid waste systems, public buildings and other structures, and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas it is the public's interest for residents, civic leaders, children in the City of Sparks to gain knowledge and understanding of and to maintain a progressive interest in the importance of public works and the public works program in their respective communities. And whereas, in the year 2021, marks the 61st Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association and the Canadian Public Works Association. Now, therefore, Ed Lawson, Mayor of Sparks of Nevada, do hereby proclaim the week of May 16th through May 22nd, 2021, as National Public Works Week and urge all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association, government agencies, and activities, events, ceremonies, to honor our public works professionals, engineers, managers, skilled workers, and employees to recognize their contributions to protecting our national health, safety, and quality of life. All right. And it doesn't look like Megan is here. No?
Mr. Carmen, please.
Okay.
There we go. All right. Well, if you'd like to.
So I just want to take a moment and thank the council for recognizing public works. You know, for us, it's obviously the most important thing in the city. Other things to be considered as well. But it, it is nice, you know, public works tends to be sort of that part of the organization that's kind of off to the side and doing their job and out there and, you know, getting things done and making things happen, and, and we try not to be in the limelight as much as possible, because when we are, usually there's a problem. So, you know, my staff and, you know, the other, the other sections of community service for sure, the engineering team, we all work together to, you know, kind of make sure that all that stuff in the background runs as smoothly as possible. And we certainly appreciate public recognition for that. So thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move on to 7.3, Older Americans Month. Ms. Bybee.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I was chosen as the council member with the most seniority, not the oldest, seniority, which is important in my other job. So I'd be happy to read a proclamation. Whereas the City of Sparks includes a growing number of older Americans who have built resilience and strength over their lives through successes and difficulties. And whereas the City of Sparks benefits when people of all ages, abilities, and backgrounds are included and encouraged to share their successes and stories of resilience. And whereas the City of Sparks recognizes the need to nurture ourselves, reinforce our strength, and continue to thrive in times of both joy and difficulty. And whereas the City of Sparks can foster communities of strength by creating opportunities to share stories and learn from each other, engaging older adults through education, recreation, and service, and encouraging people of all ages to celebrate connections and resilience. Now, therefore, on behalf of Mayor Ed Lawson, Mayor of Sparks, I hereby proclaim May 2021 as Older Americans Month and urge every resident to recognize older adults and the people who support them as essential contributors to the strength of our community.
And I'm not going to pick anyone to receive that award.
It was, it was supposed to be Chairwoman Kozlowski, who's my neighbor, but she's in the hospital right now, but she should be getting out soon, so. But she's doing healthy, and as the entire Sparks Senior Citizen Advisory Committee, they're very appreciative of our support, and they're looking forward to their last Zoom meeting this week, so.
Good, thank you. All right, we're going to move on to items 7.4, 5, and 7.6. Mr. Martini.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll announce some openings we have on some of our boards and commissions. First off, there are two vacancies on the Sparks Parks and Recreation Commission, each for a three-year term ending June 30th, 2024. Members must be Sparks residents or have a valid Sparks business license. Applications will be accepted until 5:00 PM on Friday, June 11th, 2021. For our Sparks Civil Service Commission, we have two vacancies, each for three-year terms expiring June 30th, 2024. Applicants must be Sparks residents and cannot be city employees or related to one within the third degree of consing, this one always gets me, consanguinity. Applications will be accepted until 5:00 PM on Friday, June 11th, 2021. And finally, there is one vacancy on the Technical Review Committee of the Washoe County Home Consortium for a technically proficient non-staffed person for a three-year term ending June 30th, 2024. Applicants must be residents of Washoe County. Applications will be accepted until 5:00 PM on Friday, June 11th, 2021. Persons interested in serving on these committees should complete a community service application available from the city clerk's office. You may also apply online at the city's website, www.cityofsparks.us. Get involved. Then click on volunteering for a Sparks Board, Commission, or Committee. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, let's move on to consent items. Anyone wishing to take consent item out of order? Or if not, I am looking for a motion. Jeopardy music. Mr. Dare.
I, there you go. I move to approve consent items 8.1 through 8.5 as submitted.
Okay, Mr. Abbott?
I'll second it.
Okay, got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. I'm getting there. Oh, yeah. All right, motion carries. Wait a minute.
We're waiting for one.
We're waiting for one vote.
I thought I hit it.
Okay, motion carries unanimously. We're getting there.
And then it threw me out, so I was distracted.
All right, item 9.1, consideration discussion of possible approval of reimbursement to the City of Reno for Spark's share of the construction contract with Spanish Springs Construction for Tom Wharf AC paving Phase 1 project in the amount of $627,444, $44.00. With Spark's share being $196,829.18. Mr. Drinkwater.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Michael Drinkwater, Treatment Plant Manager. My privilege to be physically before you today.
It's our privilege to have you.
Thank you so much. I'm here today requesting reimbursement, approval of a reimbursement to the City of Reno for a capital improvement project at Tom Wharf. This one is for some asphaltic cement paving, or just paving, we like to say, at the plant. You can see the graphic on the screen. The golden yellowish area is the area in question that, that pavement is failed. It's potholed, it's cracking, it's just well past its service life. It also happens to be the area of the plant that gets the most truck traffic. That's where our biosolids, as well as chemicals, come through there. We easily see 10 large trucks a day across that pavement. So it's important that we keep that in good shape. This was an anticipated project. It is included in the FY '21 Tom Wharf CIP. So as is customary, the City of Reno put it out to bid. When it went out to bid, that red area you see on the map was also included as a disconnected area of pavement that we would have liked to have included in the project. The prices just weren't suitable to include it. So that was bid alternate A. The City of Reno awarded the base bid, which is what I'm before you today requesting reimbursement for, only the base bid portion of this project. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, questions from the council? You have to push your request to speak button. Okay. I can see you trying to do something.
I'm just looking.
You know, this, we may end up not using this. This is really confusing for the mayor. Or maybe it's just this mayor. Okay, so there are no questions? Then I'm looking for a motion. Ms. Bybee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move.
Yes, you're right, sorry.
I move to approve reimbursement to, to the City of Reno for Spark's share of a construction contract with Spanish Springs Construction Incorporated for the Tom Wharf AC paving Phase 1 project in the amount of $627,444, with Spark's share being $196,829.18.
Mr. Anderson.
I will second the motion.
Any further discussion? We'll have to talk about how that comes up on my screen. Because I know it's going to happen. Okay, seeing none, please vote. Okay, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Moving on to 9.2, consideration discussion of possible approval of an agreement AC 5756 with HDR Engineering, Inc., and the City of Reno for the Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility Thickened Waste Activated Sludge Short-Term Improvements and Pre-Design Project in the amount of $459,700, with Spark's share being $144,207.89. Casey, it's lovely to see your face.
You as well, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor Lawson and members of council. For the record, my name is Casey Mensor. I am the Treatment Plant Process Engineer at the Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility, and I'm here today seeking approval of this contract. This will allow engineers to design improvements for our thickened waste activated sludge process. That is a critical part of our solids handling. That's where we take all of the pollutants that have been captured in our biological treatment process, and we thicken them and prepare them for further processing where they can ultimately be disposed of. We had a 2019 evaluation of the T-WAS process, and it indicated that many of the components were at the end of their useful life. We also have several mechanical components that are obsolete. They don't make parts for them, so it's making maintenance rather challenging. So this contract, if approved, will enable the engineer to begin the design of the recommended improvements and also prepare the specifications and bid documents for us. This is a fiscal year 21-approved CIP. It's anticipated. And with that, I'm happy to answer any and all questions.
All right, questions from the council? Look, you showed up.
Did it show up?
Perfect. Charlie.
Yeah, I just had one question. So this is actually just for the pre-design? It's not the project itself? So this is the design of the project?
That's correct. And then the construction will be, I guess we'll be back to ask for the construction of the next fiscal year.
Okay, and what are we looking at? Time, timeframe for design? And then for the actual construction and activation of the new, the whole new project?
That, that's an excellent question. I know that the funds are anticipated to be requested for next fiscal year for the actual construction, but I am not 100% sure on the timeline before we get the 100% design back. But I'd be, I'd be happy to.
So the design is happening now, and then when that's completed, you'll come back to us with the actual project itself?
Yes, that's exactly right.
Okay, perfect. Thanks for the clarification.
Councilman Dare.
Yes, hello, sir. Good seeing you in person.
Oh, you as well.
And one of the things we've been talking a lot about, different upgrades and different things. Is there any upgrades going on with this particular thing we're doing, or is it just simple replacement?
So some of that will actually, it still remains to be seen. They're going to be doing some initial evaluation on some of the components. So there's, there's new technology that's out there. Currently, we have these, these air compressors that blow air into these pumps that do all this weird stuff. We have these other support pieces of equipment to provide air into these tanks to float the sludge so it can be removed. But there's these really new kind of revolutionary pumps that do all of the air compressing and, and like management themselves. So we're at, we are looking at potentially implementing new technologies that'll streamline the process, eliminate several other pieces of equipment, and kind of reduce maintenance. Hopefully. I'm, I'm excited to see what the engineers are going to come up with in this design.
I love that Casey gets excited about sludge. God, I love it. All right, any further, oh, Mr. Anderson.
Do you have a question? So it's described as short-term solutions that you guys are working on here? So what, what are the timeframes of what you're saying are short-term versus the long-term? Like you've talked about some of the different possibilities depending on where we go with different projects regionally. Where, where does that lie as far as a short-term solution?
So the short-term, these, these improvements will actually be rather long-lived. So some things we're going to be doing are addressing some structural issues with the, the tanks themselves and a lot of the mechanical components. So those will be long-lasting, but we've been doing a lot of research lately at the plant with how we, I guess, de-water, so remove all of the water from all of the solids that we're handling and everything. And a lot of those improvements have been indicating that maybe there's different ways in which we can manage the waste activated sludge. The actual thickening process, I think, is here to stay. But we might be back at some point after doing the, the research and consulting with some of the engineers on what we've found out so far on new and, and different or better ways to manage the downstream processing of the waste activated sludge. So that's why it says short-term, because this is to deal with the immediate things right now. And then we're looking at the future to implement some of the research that's been improving the process performance at the plant and, and helping save costs.
Excellent, thank you.
Okay. Any further comments, questions? Seeing none, I am looking for a motion. Ms. Vanderwell.
Yes, I move to approve agreement AC-5756 with HDR Engineering Incorporated, HDR, and City of Reno for the Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility Thickened Waste Activated Sludge Short-Term Improvements and Pre-Design Project in the amount of $459,700, with Spark's share being $144,207.18.
Okay, Mr. Abbott?
I'll second it.
Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Right away. Now we're getting, we're getting the flow of it now. I like it. All right, motion carries unanimously. That, that should have been Casey's joke. All right, thank you. You have the next one, too?
I do.
All right, 9.3, consideration discussion of possible approval of an agreement AC 5757 with Correo Engineers in the City of Reno for the Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility Aeration, is it Aeration? Aeration Tank Evaluation and Rehabilitation Project in the amount of $287,253, with Spark's share being $90,111.27. Mr. Casey.
Hello again. I'm still Casey Mensor, and unless I made a grave mistake in my last agenda item, I am still the Treatment Plant Process Engineer at the Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility. I'm here today seeking approval of an agreement between the City of Reno, the City of Sparks, and Corolo Engineers. So if approved, this contract will enable Corolo Engineering to conduct an evaluation of our aeration basins. So we have five aeration basins at the plant. They range in date from the original construction in 1966 all the way up through the latest plant expansion of 2004. And these basins are a critical part of the operation of the plant. They house the activated sludge process. So that's where we foster microorganisms to carry out the biological removal of pollutants. Now, these tanks have not had any sort of recent evaluation, given their criticality of the process. We are seeking an engineering review of a lot of the components. So included in this is a structural review. They're going to look at the concrete, as well as a lot of the different components. So the mechanical things, like the, the valves, the gates, the, the pipes and everything. This is a photograph of an empty aeration tank. And another one of the mechanical pieces are the aeration diffuser heads. So that's what you see in there in the bottom of the tank. Those are all individual. Each little circle is a, is an air diffuser head. In order for those microorganisms to breathe and consume all of the pollutants and the, and the nutrients in the wastewater, we have to provide them oxygen. So these diffuser heads, they, we pump in air into the system, and there are little membrane covers that have lots of little holes that take that air and break it up into little tiny fine bubbles and gives the microorganisms their oxygen. So included in this evaluation, what they're also looking at doing is evaluating not only the mechanical and structural components, but the, the process efficiency here. And so they're looking at replacing all of the membrane. And so they're looking at, uh, re- um, replacing all of the membranes on one of the aeration tanks. And in doing so, they're actually gonna look at how the system performs with brand-new aeration headers versus old ones. Um, as they get older and older, they get clogged with solids, or they just wear down. The materials, um, get kind of corroded. So we're gonna have them do some off-gas testing and some research and figure out, um, at what point do these aeration heads need to be replaced? Because the longer that they last, the more air we have to pump through. They get clogged, we gotta pump more air, use more electricity, use more power. And so they're gonna develop for us a cost-effective replacement program for these, um, for these heads. By comparing the new to the old, they'll see, do all of them need to be replaced? Or if not, then when, to make it economical? So, uh, with that, I'm happy to answer any and all questions. Oh, uh, just a, a fun fact. So there's a lot of diffusers there. This is, uh, one section of one pass of this, of these tanks. In each tank, there are between four and five thousand diffuser heads. Now with that, I'm happy to answer any and all questions.
Questions from the council? I, I'm glad that you work out there. You obviously enjoy your job. Mr. Dare.
So you, you said they're gonna come and replace those. Is the cost of doing that in that, or is this the cost we're paying right now just for them to come out, do an evaluation? Or does it include them replacing five thousand of those heads?
It is my understanding that it is included in the, the, the whole assessment. Doing the process assessment, um, with the replacement of the heads and the inspections is all included in the same, is included in the same contract.
Be the first time I said to you guys, I think we got a deal here. Pricewise. Well, I think it's amazing, all the different things we do, and I think to our public, sometimes we talk about, we talk about the plant and, and all the finances going in, but this is a critical element to our city, and if we do not upkeep these things, then we will all be very sad. And so thank you for all you do. Appreciate it.
Things get quite ugly when your toilet doesn't flush. Okay, any other questions from the council? Seeing none, I'm looking for a motion. Mr. Anderson.
Move to approve agreement AC five seven five seven with Corolo, uh, Engineers Incorporated in the City of Reno for the Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility Aeration Tank Evaluation Rehabilitation Project in the Amount of two hundred and eighty-seven thousand two hundred and fifty-three dollars, with Sparks' share being ninety thousand one hundred and eleven dollars and twenty-seven cents.
Ms. Bybee?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Thanks, Casey. Appreciate it. All right, nine point four, consideration discussion, possible approval of resolution three three seven eight, waiving annual fees associated with outdoor dining and encroachment permits during the fiscal year twenty twenty-two. Mr. Rundle, Yearington's finest.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know on the agenda item, it says Armando to present in. Oh, your Zoom screen doesn't need to be adjusted, it's me. Thanks for introducing the item, Mr. Mayor, Jim Rundle, the Planning Manager. Uh, this item provides the City Council with the opportunity to waive fees associated with requests in our Victorian Square for merchants to get the outdoor dining permits. The city issues these permits so that the cat, outdoor cafes in, in Victorian Square can utilize some of our right-of-way and our sidewalks to operate their businesses outside. In twenty twenty, the City Council did approve, or excuse me, in twenty twenty, the, the city received approximately ninety-three hundred dollars in revenue from the fees associated with the encroachment permits. But last year, the, due to the pandemic, the City Council did waive those fees due to the impacts from the pandemic and our merchants and restaurants in our Victorian Square area. This item today provides the City Council with the opportunity to waive the fees associated with the encroachment permits for outdoor dining downtown. And I wanted to make sure that the council understood and the merchants understood. They would still need to get a permit to conduct outdoor dining or, uh, in the Victorian Square. It just waives the fee associated with the permit. All the standards associated with the permit are not changed. Those would still be in place, such as providing the, I'll call them barricades around the area or out delineating the area of their outdoor, outdoor area. So, Mr. Mayor, that concludes my presentation.
Okay, are you doing an outreach to them to, to let them know they have to fill out the app even though it's not gonna cost them any money?
Mr. Acting Manager?
Thanks, Jim. Uh, Mr. Mayor, we, we contact each of the holders of the permits every year to remind them that it's time to renew. So we do have outreach.
Perfect, thank you. All right, any questions from the council? Ms. Bybee?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I just had one question, Jim, as far as revenue that we would have, um, uh, seen if we had those fees coming in. What is an approximate amount?
Yes, uh, thanks. Thank you, Councilmember Bybee. And so I identified in twenty twenty, the city collected around nine thousand three hundred dollars. So I would estimate ten thousand dollars or so that the city would, would not receive if the, if the council chose to waive the fees associated with the permits.
Okay, I appreciate that, uh, clarification, and, uh, uh, I, I absolutely support us being able to support businesses. It's been a rough year for everyone, and with everyone just being able, um, to gradually move to that hundred percent opening, uh, businesses are still recovering, and whatever we can do to facilitate that, and especially in Victorian Square, when we're really trying to get people down there and support those businesses and, um, and our local community having access to outdoor dining, which has been great, uh, a great addition to Victorian Square and across the city. So I do support this and appreciate that, uh, we have looked at trying to do something that would, would facilitate that. So thank you for your work.
Okay, Mr. Dare.
I wanna thank staff for that approach, and, and I, I also agree. I do think with the events being unknown, I know we have a lot of events coming, but there's still some that kind of hit and miss and then supporting businesses in that area. And I, I do hope that our, our citizens go out and enjoy what we've put in place, because our downtown's fantastic. So, very good, thank you.
Okay, and our first event is going to be Star Spangled Sparks?
I couldn't say, Mr. Mayor.
I, I go to the big boss over there, Tony Bela, he knows. Thanks, Tony. Yeah, so get ready. We're gonna have some fun down there on the plaza. Okay, with that, um, I'm looking for a motion. Mr. Abbott?
Excuse me. Emotidot resolution three three seven eight to waive annual fees associated with outdoor dining and encroachment permits for fiscal year twenty twenty-two.
Mr. Dare.
Second.
Okay, I got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Rundle.
You're welcome.
Okay, nine point five, are you up for this one, too, Jim?
Yes, sir.
Okay, nine point five, consideration of possible action on a request to direct the, the city manager to initiate changes to the Title Twenty of the Sparks Municipal Code to address inconsistencies, oversights, evolving land use, and recent changes to the comprehensive plan. Mr. Rundle?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, Jim Rundle, Planning Manager, presenting on this item. As the city, as the City Council may remember, this year, there have been, in twenty twenty-one, there have been a number of directives to the city manager to amend Title Twenty. A recent direction included amendments for rock crushing, uh, uh, in, in proximity to construction sites. Additionally, there was a request to amend the temporary use permit process. Uh, additional request to, uh, for staff to look into construction hours related to, uh, construction in the City of Sparks. And more recently, uh, Councilmember Abbott, you requested the manager look into drive-throughs for marijuana, which will be coming back to the council for direction soon. Not today, but, but soon, Councilmember Abbott. Those, those directives, uh, were very highly discussed, robustly discussed at our February twenty-second meeting, Councilwoman Vanderwell, which you remember very well. At the end of that meeting, uh, Councilman Dare, you requested the manager bring back an item to discuss amendments to the Title Twenty in it, in its entirety. We've now been using the municipal code at, in its current form for approximately five years. Mayor Lawson, you were one of the key components to spearhead that amendment process back in twenty fifteen, and as you remember, it was very robust and included a lot of outreach meetings and workshops, planning commission, city council. Staff maintains, our staff maintains lists when we look up items that are kind of gray, I'll call it. They're not clear as to what the intent of the city council was at the time. So we maintain a list of possible amendments that may need to be done at some point. They're not necessarily needed that day. We can make an administrative call. We understand what the council's direction was as a, as a veteran, but it is not necessarily clear to the public. That could be on a definition of something in the municipal code. But we also, as we utilize it, we find, to an extent, holes in the code. We believe that there may be a hole, uh, in, hole in the code in terms of the missing middle housing. And Councilmember Bybee, you've recently spoke to the need for, uh, the city to tackle such an item. We may have holes in our hillside ordinance, uh, that we can, we can clean up. Additionally, in March, the City Council approved the comprehensive plan, and the new comprehensive plan that is in compliance with the twenty nineteen regional plan. And there was some direct directives or policy decision the council made that, that do affect, uh, the Title Twenty and the zoning code, and we believe we can take that opportunity to include those new directives. I wanna make it, I want to, uh, manage the expectation as well with the City Council that this amendment, unlike the outdoor processing or the construction hours, would not be turned around as quickly because it is more comprehensive. It would require more, uh, meetings with staff, more meetings with the planning commission, the council, outreach with the community. I don't really entirely know what that plan would look like, because the council hasn't made that direction at this point. But it would be more robust, it would not be, it would not come back to the council in July. We may even need to utilize a consultant's input on something like the missing middle housing component. So we would, we would take, uh, we will take your direction today and identify how we move forward with potential amendments to Title Twenty. And, Mr. Mayor, that concludes my presentation.
Okay, thank you. All right, questions from the council? Ms. Bybee?
Took me a minute to get there, sorry. Um, yeah, so Jim, what we're, we're looking for with this is, uh, the direction for staff to totally, um, review Section Twenty. Like, right when I came on the council, we hit, we're in the process of updating it, and looking at maybe a, you said a six-year, on a, probably every six years, looking at it in its entirety. Would it help as we move through, you know, each year's gonna bring something different? We don't know. Uh, certainly, this last year, we had no idea, uh, what we'd be facing, and we don't know a year, or two years, or three years from now. So will, I think, having Title Twenty flexible enough for us to, um, to move with and to grow with makes sense. Uh, I think reevaluating it certainly, because five years ago are very different times than right now. So I think the need for the update, um, is, is there to look at things that we realized were oversights or changes in needs, land, whether it's land use or something else. So I think, uh, it is, it is, you know, I support, uh, staff reviewing this and keeping it. I guess what I'm asking is how, uh, my, my goal would be to keep it, um, a living document that we're able to move with and work with and not be, you know, tied down where every single minor thing has to keep coming back to us, you know, whether it's just major things or it's a little more broad in some of its scope. Uh, I, I don't know, you, you do this and you're more the expert than I am, and I don't know how you would see us being able to review Title Twenty and make it something that, that can, you know, not have to be, require your time, because it is more of a living, living document that moves as we do, as we move forward. Thank you.
So, from my perspective, uh, I mean, in, sitting on, you, you were on the regional planning, uh, governing board for a long time, uh, Councilmember Bybee, and you identify, or you, you are aware that the state statutes require the regional planning update, that plan every five years. Here we are, looking at potentially a five-year update of our zoning code, and it, I believe it is timely. I don't know that I could zero in on a time of when it would be necessary each five years, or every four years, or every three years. The, the directions that the council have made this year through the city manager on outdoor processing and construction hours and marijuana, we didn't necessarily have that last year or the year before. But these amendments all just came out of coincidence to an extent, and we have, we also maintained that list, and it was, uh, the, on the twenty-second, we discussed, and, and Councilmember Dare, you, you said, geez, there's a lot of things we're discussing here today. These two things take a lot of time. Let's, let's do this all-encompassing and more, uh, comprehensively and, and do those things. Five years is a, is a good amount of time, I guess, but I couldn't necessarily, from a professional, uh, scientific approach, that five years is the time it needs to be updated. But it is, it is, in my opinion, appropriate to, to go into the municipal code zoning standards and really look in where we can make those updates and modifications. And again, we recently, the City Council updated our comprehensive plan and got it approved in comp- in, uh, compliance with the regional plan. In those policies, in those goals that the council directed and, and the planning commission, there are standards that would be affected by that approval. So potentially, five years is appropriate, because the regional plan requires your comprehensive plan to be updated, which provides new direction to your municipal code.
Okay, any other questions from the council? And, you know, for me, it's like you change one thing, it changes something else, and then we go through different times of where we were. E- even in fourteen, we were struggling to get back on our feet economically, and we just had a pandemic that we're, uh, finishing off here. So these things all affect how we do this, and so you make one change, it kind of has a domino effect for other parts of the code. So I don't think you ever get done doing it personally. I think it's something we're gonna have to do for, as long as you're sitting up here. So, all right, any other, uh, question, comments? All right, if not, I'm looking for a motion. Mr. Dare?
Yes. Thank you. I move to direct the city manager to initiate-
Hang, hang on.
Oh?
Yeah, it did change.
It changed.
It took me out.
It did that to me last time.
Oh. Would you like me to do it, or do you want?
Go ahead, you started.
Okay.
We're overriding the computer.
Well, are we okay with that on the-
We're gonna mess with your IT? Okay. So thank you for bringing this forward. I appreciate it, I know we all do. It's a big conversation we had. I move to direct the city manager to initiate changes to Title Twenty of the Sparks Municipal Code to address inconsistencies, oversights, evolving land use needs, and recent changes to the comprehensive plan. Thank you.
Okay, so we gotta move by, we gotta motion by, Councilman Dare, second by Ms. Bybee?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. We're gonna, we're gonna get there. Any further discussion? All right, seeing none, please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Jim. Okay, on to, uh, nine point six, this is the first reading. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the first reading of Bill Number Two Seven Eight Three to amend Title Twenty, Chapter Twenty Point Zero Three Point Zero Three Zero, Outdoor Processing and Twenty Point Zero Three Point Zero Four Zero Temporary Uses of the Sparks Municipal Code to Allow Temporary Outdoor Processing, Including But Not Limited to Rock Crushing, On Or Near Residentially Zoned Land Associated With Approved Projects and Subject to Use Standards. A public hearing will be held on Bill Two Seven Eight Three will be acted upon at the regular meeting of the Sparks City Council on Monday, June fourteenth, twenty twenty-one, at two PM at the Sparks City Council Legislative Building, Located at seven forty-five Fourth Street, Sparks, Nevada, eight nine four three one.
Okay. All right, we'll, we've got, we're out of order here, so we're gonna go, uh, public hearing items. Uh, item ten point one, public hearing on the tentative budget for the City of Sparks for fiscal year twenty-one twenty-two, as required by NRS three five four dot five nine six. Mr. Kronk?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Mr. and, uh, members of the council, isn't this nice?
It's nice to see your smiling face.
This is great. Uh, this is a good day. I have two items related to next year's budget in front of you. Uh, the first one being, as you mentioned, uh, in, in, uh, compliance with state law, we have to hold a, a, a public hearing on the tentative budget, which was filed by staff, um, on April fifteenth with the Department of Taxation, again, in accordance to, uh, into, in the rules. So no action on this first item, except just to open a public hearing on the tentative budget.
All right, this is a public hearing. Madam Clerk may open it up to the public. Do we have anyone in the public wishing to speak at this time?
If anybody wishes to provide public comment on item ten point one, um, please press star nine from your telephone. Use the raise your hand function via your Zoom app, or go ahead and step up to the podium. We'll give them just a minute, Mr. Mayor. And I'm showing none.
Okay, we'll bring it back to the dais. Mr. Kronk?
Uh, nothing more than two. No, not, not on the tentative budget.
Just a public?
That's it. No other action, and just open it and close it.
All right, any questions from the council? We'll save them for 9.7. Okay. With that being said, we're going to move on to 9.7, Consideration Possible Adoption of the Final Budget for the City of Sparks for Fiscal Year 2122. Mr. Kronk?
All right, very good. Again, my name is Jeff Kronk, your Chief Financial Officer. And this is the second item. And this is the good part of the day. Of course, unless you vote no, then it'll be interesting for me. But, um, this is, this is the culmination of all our work that we've done in the past, whoa, since last October. So it's been a while. And I don't have a presentation today because frankly, we presented this quite a bit to you. And there is no change, or at least no substantive change, uh, to what we're, what we're presenting you today, to what we showed you, uh, with the city manager's final budget recommendations. Uh, there's always some cleanup stuff when we're actually putting that information onto the, the, the state budget forms. Um, and that's what I have in front of you today. And so, so everything we've talked about, all the fiscal policies, um, everything is, is the same. Uh, there, there are no, you know, percentage movers or, or, or large dollars, just very small items, um, you know, that, in the cleanup process. So what I have before you today is, is just the final budget in its, uh, state form. Uh, we are required to file it and approve it and file it by, uh, June 1st. So with that, unless you have any questions, that's my presentation.
Questions from the council? This is Mr. Dare.
I just want to say, because I think sometimes people don't realize all the work that goes into what you just said. And so for our public that's listening, uh, is this is a big process and our whole staff comes together. And we have a zero base budget, which means we start over every year. And it's amazing what we do. So good job to the staff. I know this has been a roller coaster of a year, uh, trying to figure out what and how. And we appreciate everyone working together. So I just want to say kudos to you and to your team and to all our staff. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Ms. Bybee?
Um, I guess I was just, if, if the public, because there's nothing up here for them to look at, if they've not tuned in before, they don't know what we're talking about, we've all seen and been briefed and part of budget workshops. So we're all very familiar with it. But if someone wanted to see what that final budget was, where would they go so that they can access and see what we're doing with our funds?
Yeah, absolutely. It's on our website, uh, both, uh, the best document to look at, if anybody's interested, is looking at the city manager's budget recommendations that we presented last April. That's the most easy to read, uh, user-friendly, if you will. The state document is, isn't, quite frankly, it's just, uh, numbers and it's sometimes hard to follow. So i, if I were to point anybody, and it's published on our website, would be the city manager's, but final budget recommendations that we, that we presented, uh, last April.
Okay.
But certainly, the budget document itself, as soon as you approve it, uh, will also be on the website.
Okay, I appreciate that because there are people who, you know, do want to really look at it in depth. And I want to thank you for, um, for your leadership on the fiscal side through this whole last year. I mean, we didn't know a year from, a year ago, where we, where this was, this pandemic was going to take us, what was going to happen fiscally to ourselves, to our businesses, to our residents. And, uh, throughout the year, it has been quite an interesting ride. Uh, obviously, the federal, federal monies that have come in here have helped dramatically. And then we've in turn helped our communities with it. Our sales tax has been up, which is an anomaly that we're not going to argue with because that's helped out quite a bit. And I do know that, um, we've talked about this, that, uh, we do have more federal funds that are coming, uh, that are coming to the city or just have arrived. But those are not included in this budget, correct? We'll be addressing use of those funds at a later, at a later meeting, correct?
That is correct. We're going to treat it just like we would any, any other grant that we would receive.
Okay.
Um, and especially since we got that just, yep, yesterday, or last week yesterday, last business day.
Right.
Um, so not, not nearly enough in time to, to fold it into our budget. And that would give us plenty of time to discuss it and, and think strategically as to how we want to use those funds. Um, and then as, uh, we come up with our expenditure plan, we'll augment the budget accordingly.
Okay. And then that'll also give us time too, to see what the state is going to be doing because there's funds coming to the state, kind of coordinating. So we're directing funds where they might be missing, um, and seeing where the needs are at that time.
Yep, absolutely.
Perfect, thank you so much.
Okay, any other comments from the council? Seeing none, I am looking for a motion. Mr. Abbott?
I move to adopt the final budget for the City of Sparks for Fiscal Year 2021 to 2022, as presented.
Mr. Anderson?
I'll second the motion. And likewise, thank you for everything your team does and all of the departments. I, I know each and every one of you get to enjoy the fun of a budget. And thank you for the work you guys do for us. Thank you.
Okay, uh, any further discussion? Just one comment from me is, Jeff, you've been spot on through all of this since I've been on the council. Ten years to be within a, less than a percent every year on our budget is truly amazing. And it's really was amazing after last year and the pandemic and, and everything else when we had no clue and no basis with the, how to do this. So, and it was like sheer terror followed by complete relief. And, uh, good job, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, with that being said, uh, please vote. Okay, I haven't seen it yet. I have to wait for the computer to tell me it's okay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. All right, moving on, uh, there are no planning and zoning public hearing action items. Comments from the council? Comments from the Assistant City Manager? I haven't gotten there yet. Comments from the public? I was just going with comments. This, Julie changed up my. Comments from the public, Madam Clerk?
If anybody wishes to provide public comment at this time?
Yes, I got the comedy routine going today.
Please press star nine from your telephone, or utilize the raise your hand feature from your Zoom app, or make your way down to the podium.
When I get confused, I make fun of myself. I apologize.
And I'm showing none, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. So now we'll move on to, and, uh, announcements for the Mayor, City Manager, City, City Council. Anybody wishing to speak? Christopher Dare?
Of course!
I could always count on you for that.
I just actually want to say, one of, one of the greatest parts of this job is actually our staff. And it's so good to see everybody. I mean that, I am not an introvert, you know that already. And so that, uh, this whole last year and a half's been quite difficult. And I actually am so happy that we are not doing Zoom anymore. And it's part of it, to see all you guys, seriously. And so thank you all so much. I know that, uh, as the public continues to come back, that'd be great too. But, uh, you fill my soul, appreciate it. Thank you, you do too, Mayor Lawson. Thanks for filling my heart so much.
I'm glad that I can do that for you and be your comic relief. Ms. Bybee?
Um, I would just like to make a special, excuse me, special acknowledgement to, uh, the city clerk, to Lisa and Julie, and all the staff, you know, the IT staff and everyone for this whole new system, which, um, I think is amazing, especially as we, if, as we get used to using. And I kind of feel like it's a first day at school, you know, and I'm trying to train, um, train on this system, but it looks like it's going to be a good one. But the work that you all did, um, to put this together and to, um, move us forward because we're all looking about technology for the city. And everything that we can do, uh, and I'm understanding this system is going to make it, uh, much more streamlined, much more, um, efficient for our staff, which everything we can do, uh, to help staff and to be more efficient, uh, is much appreciated. So thank you to all of you for your hard work on this.
Anyone else? And I, and I will say, I'll, I'll learn how to do this. But it, it goes along with the technology thing. And we definitely need to continue with the technology. And I know this was going to save you hours and hours of work over there. So it's, it's going to be a, a big deal for us. So with that, uh, no more comments. We are on to my favorite, item 13, adjournment. For the good of the order, we are adjourned.
Okay, I'm going to give staff just a moment and we will be calling the redevelopment agency to order, but I know they need a minute to get, to get us switched over.
There's like this awkward delay in there. Yeah, there's an awkward delay for me that it's, uh...
Does it actually see everything?
Yeah.
Yeah, yours isn't popping up.
Yours doesn't show up down here. It shows all of ours that we moved it.
Well, it doesn't display until she, yeah, until she puts it on there. So we'll just have to work on some timing issues.
Okay. I'd like to call to order the Sparks Redevelopment Agency Meeting of Monday, May 24th, 2021, with a roll call.
Chairperson Bybee?
Here.
Agency members Abbott?
Here.
Vanderwell?
Here.
Anderson?
Here.
Lawson?
Here.
Dare?
Here.
Chief Legal Officer Adams?
Here.
Acting Chief Administrative Officer Martini?
Here.
We have a quorum, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Um, let me move on to item three, public comment.
If anybody is wishing to provide public comment at this time, please press star nine from your telephone, use the raise your hand option from your Zoom app, or step on up to the podium. And I'm showing none, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, moving on to item four, 4.1, Approval of the Agenda. Do I have a motion to approve? Oh, thank you. I have a motion to approve the agenda by Agency Member Dare. Uh, do I have a?
Move to approve the agenda as it is?
Thank you. Anne? Oh, okay. So approval of the agenda, uh, let's hold that for a minute because, uh, Member Dare, do you want to make a, um, motion to approve the agenda?
Yes, I, I move to approve the agenda with moving 10.1 before...
Eight point one.
Eight point one.
Eight point one.
Eight point one before seven point one.
Eight point one before seven point one, thank you.
Okay, I have a motion to approve the agenda by Agency Member Dare, moving item 8.1 before item 7.1. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Agency Member Abbott. All those in favor, please vote.
I don't have a voting.
Oh. We need, uh... Is he going to have to do an oral vote?
I'm going to vote aye.
Okay, so, um, the mayor's online is not working, so we will do a, um... He'll say aye, and the rest of us will vote on the computer. And I've got his aye, so we are, uh, motion carries unanimously, six to nothing. Um, moving on to minutes, 5.1. Consideration, Discussion, and Possible Approval of the Minutes of the Sparks Redevelopment Agency Meeting for April 26th, 2021, and the Special Redevelopment Agency Meeting for May 10th, 2021. Do I have a corrections additions or a motion to approve? Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
I move to approve the minutes of the Sparks Redevelopment Agency Meeting for April 26th, 2021, and the Special Redevelopment Agency Meeting for May 10th, 2021.
Second.
Okay, so I have a motion by Agency Member Anderson, the second by Agency Member Vanderwell. Um, all those in favor, please vote.
Aye.
Okay, mo, motion carries unanimously. And that's six, not five. Okay, moving on. Uh, we are on... It's a little bit slow coming up on my screen, sorry. Uh, consideration, consent agenda, consent items, uh, 6.1. Consideration and Possible Acceptance of the Report of the Claims and Bills Approved for Payment and Appropriation Transfers for the Period of April 8th, 2021 through May 5th, 2021. Do I have a motion? Okay, I have a motion to approve by Agency Member Dare.
I move to accept the report of claims and bills and the appropriation transfers for the period of April 8th, 2021 through May 5th, 2021.
And I have, so I have a motion by Agency Member Dare, seconded by Agency Member Vanderwell. Uh, please vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. I have a unanimous vote of six, nothing. And then, uh, let's go ahead and move on to, uh, we're now moving to, uh, item 8.1. 8.1 in public hearing on the tentative budgets for the redevelopment agencies of the City of Sparks Areas 1 and 2 for Fiscal Year 2021, 2022, as required by NRS 354.596. Mr. Kronk, hello?
Good afternoon again, Chairwoman and members of the agency. I am your Chief Financial Officer, Jeff Kronk. And, uh, I have, again, two items before you. These are companion items, like, just like we did for the city council meeting. Uh, the, uh, first one being a public hearing on the tentative budget for fiscal 22 that we filed again on, uh, May, uh, April 15th, as required by the state. And in accordance to state law, we have to hold just a public hearing. So again, no action on this item, except to open and close a public hearing.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kronk. Uh, Madam Clerk, do we have any, uh, can we open a public hearing on item 8.1?
If anybody would like to provide public comment on this item, please press star nine from your telephone, use the raise your hand feature on your Zoom app, or step up to the podium. And I'm showing none, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We will close public comment on item 8.1 and move back to item 7.1. Consideration and Possible Adoption of the Final Budgets for the Redevelopment Agency of the City of Sparks Areas 1 and 2 for Fiscal Year 2021, 2022.
Again, thank you, Madam Chairwoman. This is, uh, Jeff Kronk, your Chief Financial Officer and members of the agency. Uh, this is, um, the item before you to approve the final budget for the redevelopment agency for fiscal 22. And again, I don't have a presentation today because again, it is essentially the same, it's identical actually, uh, to what we presented to you as the city manager's budget recommendations in April. So again, uh, these are the state forms, uh, which we'll get your signature on and file with the state in compliance with their June 1st requirement. And, um, with that, those are my, uh, those are my remarks, but I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Do we have any questions from the agency members? And Jeff, once again, this information also would be, uh, people can go online, look at the, um, city manager's budget recommendations, and it's also included separately for the redevelopment agency, correct?
Yes, and they'll see both budgets for, um, the, uh, both areas, Area 1 and 2 for the redevelopment agency.
Okay. Uh, thank you. Seeing no other questions, I'm looking for a motion. Okay. Thank you. Seeing no other questions, I'm looking for a motion, which is already there. I see, motion by Agency Member Anderson?
Yes, I move to adopt the final budgets for the redevelopment agency for the City of Sparks, Areas 1 and 2, as presented today for fiscal year 2021, 2022.
Second?
I have a motion by Agency Member Anderson, with the second by Agency Member Dare. Everyone, please vote.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
With six votes. Item, thank you, Jeff. Item 9, comments, 9.1. Madam Clerk, do we have any comments from the public?
If anybody wishes to provide public comment, please press star nine from your telephone. Use the raise your hand feature on your Zoom app, or step on up to the podium. And I'm showing none, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Moving on to 9.2, Announcements from the agency and Chief Administrative Officer. Any announcements? Okay, seeing none. You took my gavel.
We're adjourned.
We're adjourned.
I adjourned before you did.